This meeting is being held with the Board of Trustees, the Cardinal Public Library pursuant to remote provisions provided for the recent amendments to the Open Meetings Act in regard to the Governor's Declaration of Disaster, June 26, 2020. As President, I did comment that an in-person meeting of this board is not practical or prudent because of the statewide COVID-19 disaster. Accordingly, this meeting will be held remotely. The Secretary will call the roll.
Do you want this webinar statement first? In the webinar environment, participants may type questions or statements into the Q and A at this time, and may request access to speak during this portion of the meeting, be it the Q and A or by using the hand raising function. The roll. Barbara Levine.
Here.
Susan Tullis.
She's here. Let me let her in. Susan, you're here by phone, right?
I'm on the computer.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Sorry.
And I think we also have a call-in which might be Gwen. Gwen, is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yep, you're unmuted.
Okay. It's updating Zoom, so I can't see you, but I'm on the phone.
Okay. We hear you.
I'm calling the roll and we're waiting for Susan.
She's here. She said she was here.
I'm here, but I don't know why I can't see you or you can't see me.
Susan, you came in. Hang on, let me promote you to panelist. I think you might have come in using a link that the public would use. And I'm promoting you now, so that... There you go.
Roland Person here. Julian P. Phil Brown.
Here.
Joyce Hayes.
Here.
Chastity Mays. Don Presser.
Here.
Harriet Simon.
Hi, here.
Good.
When we have a quorum, at this time, if there's any public comment, we'll proceed according to the webinar environment rules. Are any public comments? If not, then we'll move on to the President's report. Generally, we have had committee assignments. I didn't make any assignments tonight. What I'll be doing is sending you an email each of you, asking you if you have any particular reason you want to serve on any committee. As you know, we haven't been a strongly committed operation with committees, but if we need to have them, we will go ahead and appoint standing committees in the past, and I'll be inquiring of what your interest is. Having said that, we move on to the secretary's report. Have you all seen the minutes? And if so, is there a motion to approve them?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes, sir. There are several names that are misspelled in the minutes. Joyce Hayes and Chastity Mays need to be consistently correct. Also, did someone leave the meeting early in the Librarians' Report? Item three, that's one of the instances where Chastity's name is misspelled, I believe. But there are only seven yays, and in item four, there are eight.
Yes, Julian disappeared.
Did he leave early?
He disappeared and came back.
Came back, okay. Those are the ones.
Any other corrections or additions?
And the roll call. Joyce's name is misspelled?
Yes.
But we knew who she was.
With those corrections as noted, are you ready to vote to approve the minutes as corrected?
Yes.
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 Please have a roll call. Roland.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian. Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity? Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Here.
That's all.
We have any correspondence or communications?
No.
All right. Is this on the financial reports? Gwen, do you want to address us on this?
Yeah, we still do not have any income coming in really to speak of. And then we started buying more books because we had quite a long pause while we were closed, and we've started ramping that up again. And let's see, we also bought some equipment, such as we replaced the water fountain with one that you didn't have to put your mouth near, and other things to prepare for COVID. So we're looking at how the budget might change based on that. And then we're also looking at canceling things that maybe not be used, like the movie subscription, since it'll probably be a while before we can do those kind of programming again. So that's mostly what we've been doing.
The bills have been distributed electronically. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
Yes. I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Who was the first? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first, the motion and the second, who that was.
Roland moved and Phil seconded, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And also to note, oh, I'm sorry. To note on the bills, the insurance payments have started arriving again, so we'll be paying $2,000 roughly a month until we get our property taxes, and then we'll pay it off.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland, yes. Julian? Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity? Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
You have a financial report also distributed electronically. Is there any discussion or questions about that?
Couple of questions. Item four is unemployment insurance. I'm a little puzzled. I thought everybody was still getting paid. Why would there be so much unemployment?
Well, it changes per year. So in December of 2019, it increased due to the employee collecting unemployment in 2018. So it's just kind of a year behind. So it's not really due to coronavirus. We haven't laid anybody off due to that. It's from previous years. And then that should correct itself, I think, at the end of, like in 2020, we'll go back to a more normal rate.
And then in 230, looks like the library utilities went up a lot?
Um, yeah, it probably, it did go up. I'm going to double check that, but, well, it went down while we were closed, and then it has increased a lot. But we also did a budget amendment for that, so I'll take a closer look and make sure that's correct. But we did save some money while we were closed, and then now it's more back to normal because it goes quite high during the summer.
Okay.
But those could just be reversed, I think.
Is there a motion to approve the financial reports?
I moved.
Back to you. I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian? Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity? Don?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
I think that brings us to your report.
Don, Gwen, you can stay if you want to, because you don't have to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Building and grounds maintenance, I don't think, there's not really too much specific to talk about. Josh has been doing touch-up painting. He painted our exterior doors. And so that's, things are looking pretty nice in here. Let's see. The annual report is submitted, that to you guys, and sent that off to the city as well, something that we have to compile every year, end of the fiscal year. The numbers are a little bit low, mostly just because of COVID, like we didn't have people walking in the door for seven weeks at the end of the fiscal year. But they're not too bad. Still do, you know, a lot of programming, a lot of program attendance. Let's see. COVID sick leave, I have to admit to you that I probably made an error in my interpretation of COVID sick leave. Let me share my screen with you real quick so I can give you the context of what it is that I'm talking about, and then you can advise me as to what you would prefer I do about this. One second. Okay. So this is the labor poster here. Let me scroll down so you can see it. So basically, it says that there are, there are six different reasons for people to take leave. And it first discusses a sick leave, which is two weeks, and then it discusses this emergency FMLA. And the way that I read this, and I think it has to do with the way it was explained to me in a webinar, was that all of your employees get two weeks of paid sick leave for any of these six reasons that have to do with COVID. It could be that you're taking care of someone who has been advised to be in quarantine. It can be that you're sick yourself. It can be that you're taking care of a child because your daycare is not open due to COVID. It can be anything substantially similar. And then there's also an emergency FMLA that is paid, which is an additional 10 weeks. And the way that I read that was that you, that all employees for any of these reasons can take 10 weeks of paid FMLA for any of these six reasons. But if it is reason number five, which is childcare, then it is only paid at 2/3 of the employee's rate. That's the way that I read that. I didn't interpret it for all of our employees, but I did interpret it for one employee who had a different, who had one of the other reasons, other than childcare. And has not, you know, did take some of the sick leave for that reason, but may need to take additional leave in order to take care of someone who is likely to be put into quarantine for health reasons in their household. So that was my interpretation of it. However, reading it again and reading, reading other, like clearer interpretations of it, and I'm now reading it as, and I think this is probably universally true, which is that everybody gets two weeks off, but you get 10 additional weeks at 2/3 pay if you are experiencing a childcare issue related to COVID. But there's no additional 10 weeks for any of these other reasons, like that you actually get COVID or that you have been advised to quarantine. So I'm just going to look for your guidance on whether I should retract the statement that I gave to the employee who may need those 10 weeks for something other that is not related to childcare, or whether you are okay with my interpretation. I don't currently have, whatever, whatever you decide, it expires at the end of 2020. I don't have anyone who is like, acting like they're going to take advantage of this unnecessarily. I have one person taking it for childcare reasons, and they have to, child can't get into, isn't allowed to be put it back in because they have minimum number of people in childcare, so they can't get their child in for another month. They're doing some work from home and possibly using some of this, some of this leave. I feel like if somebody gets COVID, they're going to be sick for more than two weeks in most cases. And if they are taking care of someone in their household who is really, really sick, they also may need to be off for more than two, than 10 weeks. My full-timers, of course, have sick time, but my part-timers do not have anything. So I would just look for your advice on what you want to do as far as compensating people at that 10 weeks, you know, according to my original interpretation, or making some adjustment to that, or just interpreting it by the letter of the law, which is, it's two weeks, and that's all you get. And I apologize for my misinterpretation of it. There's been a lot of things to have to interpret and figure out, you know, how to create new policies and so on and so forth. And I read this thing 20 times, and so did the employee who I spoke to. We both read through it and had that same interpretation, that it would apply to all six of the reasons why a person might need COVID. They would be able to take 10 weeks. But, but having read like the city's interpretation and a longer interpretation that was probably later posted by the state, I don't think that I'm correct. But we, of course, as a local institution, can do what our board wants to allow. So your thoughts, please?
It seems to me that if you've changed your interpretation and you're comfortable in thinking the current one is correct, you should notify the employees of that. The only caveat would be if you have promised something to somebody based on the old
Right.
that you want to follow through on.
Right, that is exactly the bind in that I did, you know, let that person know that that would be available to them if needed. So I would have to retract that. If I went ahead and just offered it to her anyway, then that would really have to be offered to anybody in that situation. It couldn't really just be offered to her. We could also change, you know, you could add an additional two weeks for part-timers, or, you know, we could revisit this and come up with some other way to fairly compensate people. That person did already take some of the sick leave time for one of these reasons. So I do worry about them as a part-timer being able to, to afford what might happen if they are forced to quarantine again.
Well, this, this document is talking about what must be provided. It doesn't say you can't provide more if you so choose. My overall concern would be, I guess, liability. If you have made the broader interpretation available to all of the employees, then I think it needs to be corrected to wherever it needs to be, you know, so we don't, you know, whether we know people are going to be using it or not, we don't want to put ourselves in a position that should everybody suddenly need it, that they all want 10 weeks. So Don is probably more familiar with the liability end of things, but I, you know, to me, it makes sense to fix it now, even with the employee you've already told. Because she, he or she has not already applied for it or tried to take advantage of it, I think, you know, was an honest mistake. And I think you just need to say, I misinterpreted this. This is how it needs to be. And if the board now thinks we need to amend this or beef it up somehow, then we can talk about that. But I do think you need to, to make it right with the people you've already told.
Yeah, the interpretation was only given to that one employee. The others were just sent the, you know, sent this sheet that you're looking at now. I think that, you know, they do have to, they do have to send some proof in order to use the time. And, yeah, I am, you know, concerned about potentially ending up without being, you know, being short-staffed. At the same time, I feel like if you needed to do one of these things, you would have to do it paid or unpaid. So, you know, if you're told to quarantine, you have to quarantine. But I do also have things that people can do from home, and things even that that employee can, can do from home. So if need be, if it needed to be reinterpreted, I could offer that and just tell that person that I need to, I need to reinterpret it according to the letter of the law. But if they ended up in a quarantine situation, I could probably find enough work for them to do from home that they could.
And aren't, aren't there also, aren't there also state resources for, for people who are, who cannot work because of COVID-19? Like, like, I don't know, you know what it's called. It's not unemployment, but probably administered through state unemployment offices. So, you know, I think even if they had to take, take off more than two weeks, there may be some other.
Other resources.
Other resources for them to, you know, have, have some, some kind of money coming in. I don't know that, but I, I know, for example, my son lived in Portland, Oregon, and was, his, his business was basically closed because of COVID-19. So he was in fact, kind of laid off. So that doesn't really apply to this situation, but I would think there might be resources, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think they can apply for unemployment or disability. They probably wouldn't get disability, but unemployment, you know, that's a possibility. They might be able to do that, you know, it's, it will fall back on us and cost us money anyway if they do that, but only to a certain extent. And, you know, it certainly might be worth a try. I mean, anybody, I've learned even that, say, you have a part-timer who you used to schedule at 20 hours a week, and now you schedule them at 15 hours a week. They can apply for unemployment to make up the difference. So, so I would think, yeah, they might be able to. And if they did, I would probably say that we wouldn't dispute their unemployment claim if they were unable to work for a few weeks because of COVID. That's certainly a possibility.
Diana, how much time did this person use?
That person was able to do some work from home remotely. So I think that they only ended up using a week of the sick leave, but they did, or maybe even a tiny bit less than their week. And, but they did do that, you know, with the understanding that they would have more time coming to them at 2/3 or even full pay, I think, should that happen, should they have to isolate again because they have a very vulnerable family member. So.
But the person that did this was a part-time employee?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and they do actually understand that I, that I misinterpreted it. So I just said I'll talk to the board, that, you know, I would, I would love to be able to offer them the opportunity to take that if needed. But, you know, I would understand if the board feels like that's unwarranted or too big of a risk in some way.
Kind of, it kind of puts us in a precarious situation because, as you said earlier, if you do that for this one person, should.
Have to do it for everyone.
Yeah. And I think that might not be a good place for us to be.
It seems to me that if you're able to offer them work from home, that would mitigate some of this problem.
Yeah, I would. Definitely.
Is the person already doing work from home?
Yeah, actually, that was when they, when they were informed by their doctor that they should either work from home or avoid coming in at the, for the time being. I, with, the first week, they, they were, they were off and paid on the FMLA sick leave. But the, the second week, they had work that, that we gave them, and they were able to do that work from home and to put in all of their hours that they would have put in at the, at the library. So, yeah, there's, there's definitely like, they are able to do some, some of our processing work. We gave them a, you know, box of material to, to put into the catalog and they, and get shelf-ready, and they picked it up curbside and dropped it off curbside. So, so yes, they are, and they probably could even be trained to maybe even do a little bit of cataloging or something if it came to, to that, so that we could have them, you know, picking up, picking up some materials curbside and dropping them off once completed. They'd have to go through some training, but that would, that would take up some of those hours that they need to, to work. So unless they actually got sick themselves, yes. I am a little bit worried about, you know, part-timers particularly, you know, getting sick with COVID and needing to be out for more than two weeks. But at least, you know, they've never had sick leave before, so at least they have sick leave for these two weeks. Or being, you know, we also are sending people home, like if they have a high fever, they're not supposed to come here. If they have, you know, COVID symptoms, you know, if you have a really bad headache and a sore throat, and you feel it's normal to you, you know, it doesn't, you still have to go get a test and be quarantined for, until you get your test results back. So, so we definitely are seeing, like, people have to do that, and I think that is going to get worse. So we will, no matter what we do with this, we will definitely find ourselves occasionally in situations where we are understaffed because, because normally, if people, you know, just feel like they're coming down with something, they don't necessarily stay home. And now they're going to have to.
Well, it seems like there's a consensus that you try to ameliorate this by compensating the employee with additional assignments for the future so that they're not prejudiced but not setting up some sort of expectation for the entire staff.
Yeah, okay. So I'll say that we're going to interpret that to the letter of the law, but offer at-home work.
Exactly. You have further reports, Diana?
I, the only other thing I was wondering is whether you might want to do a COVID committee for the coming, you know, year or through this crisis, or maybe call it a pandemic committee or a crisis committee, something like that. Because as these issues come up, for example, let's say the schools reopen, they go to school for four weeks, and then they end up closing because they get cases. Do we close? So it's the type of thing that maybe would be sort of emergency basis, or potentially, you know, get together and think through all these different things. Because you can just leave it to me, or you can leave it to me in calling the board president and saying, hey, what do you think I should do? Or we could, if you want to, form a committee to kind of address these things as they come up. But those are just some of the things that, as I'm listening to, you know, other libraries and what, and watching what, you know, listening to the school districts talk about, what they're going to be facing when they try to, to start school. And, you know, they're anticipating that potentially they could, could end up closing over and over again because of getting exposure. So, you know, when the schools closed in the fall, I called Barbara after consulting with a lot of other librarians and decided to close because the schools were closing over this. But I don't know if you're going to want to close every time the schools. Other librarians and decided to close because the schools were closing over this, but I don't know if you're going to want to close every time the schools close, if they're closing left and right. And it might be sort of a case by case situation. I can also, of course, you know, talk to the health department, but I'm sure they're also overrun with questions about these kinds of things, although they've been really nice, kind, everything, but, and responsive, but. Just curious if you might, if that might be a committee you might want to form or how you might like me to deal with that, if you just want to leave it to me and consultation with the board president. To make these decisions as they arise. Or if you'd rather have a committee or, you know, what your preferences are.
I think it's an excellent idea. I was wondering if you wanted a combination committee, if the board and your staff? Or do you want it completely? Or?
That wouldn't be a bad idea to bring in it, like maybe. You know, three board members and myself and a couple of staff members, that would be, that would be fine too, certainly. It does. It does make it easier to make these decisions that affect the librarian, community and staff. If. If I get other opinions too, so, yeah, that's a great thought.
I think you've done very well thus far in how you've handled things with whatever you needed to ask the board president at the time. We assume she's been equally wise.
She has been.
Will continue.
I think that's true, Roland, that we have a new president, maybe not, we don't have the same confidence level. I, I think. Honestly. Your idea makes sense. I would note that if we're going to have three members of the board as a committee members, that's going to make it a public meeting. And that's going to require the emergency notices and all the other things involved with that. Whereas if it were just two board members, then it would be. It would not require the same thing. Because it would be not a quorum, but I'm open to appoint. Such a committee if, if that's the, the thinking of the board. Honestly, I think it'd be better to have a committee than have, have the, have the librarian confer with me. I think that should be a broader decision than just one board member regardless of who that might be.
It does put a little bit of a strain on the board president and the director even as to when to open the library, for example. We chose to wait until after the Fourth of July, but it was a bit of a strain because we knew there would be. Complications, people could be, of course. Aggravated with that since other libraries were opening, so I believe a committee would be, make it easier for. For Don in this case. Diana, because I know it's, it's, it is quite a responsibility to make some of those decisions.
Yeah.
Let's do this, I'll make an appointment and send everyone an email of such a committee and I'll confer with Diana about how, about the composition, both in terms of number, whatever. She can include any staff member that she wants to attend, but I think it ought to be a board policy committee, not, not employees in terms of decision-making. Along with the librarian, of course. Anything else on that subject, Diana?
No, I can tell you, just give you sort of an update of what, how it is in here, some of you have been in, so you've had the experience. We. Have for this week and last week, we've stationed people at the door. So there's a staff member out there at all times to hand someone a mask if they walk in without one. And to. Record the time that the person came in so that if they overstay there two hour. Limit, we will have evidence of that and can, can point to that and say, okay, it's time to go. We've only had. Mask resistance from. A couple of, of people. And. Only one who I've actually had to threaten to, to ban from the library because I had to tell them over and over and over and over and over again and, and they were kind of defiant about it. But they were in here with masks all day for two hours, so it was okay. Had to walk around and remind people to pull them up over their nose. So, but they typically do without argument. I think probably starting next week, we'll probably get away from necessarily having someone at the, the door because it does take a staff person off of like all other duties. And have the circulation staff just watch for it, we're trying to set a tone. And try to grab all of our regular patrons. Who would be problematic with this so that, that they don't make it into the library and start hanging out without a mask on. But it has been going okay, we still operate curbside when people need it. We have all the ADA accommodations that we need if someone says they can't wear a mask. Most people put one on and we've been thanked several times by people, you know, appreciating that we're keeping them safe. It hasn't been super busy, I think that's partly because a lot of people who are in here. Eight or 10 hours a day are now only in here two hours a day. So, and of course, we're not, you know, doing in-person programs, we'll probably start doing a few very small group. Outdoor programs that we got. We've got P and G, Project Next Generation to do, and so she's looking at maybe doing groups of five kids at a time outside with masks on. And.
And a person come in for two hours, leave and come back later for another two?
No, they can come in for an hour and leave and come back for an hour.
It's two hours.
It's two hours a day, yeah. So, and that really kind of, you know, our decision on that would have to do with viral load. Somebody was sick because they were in here for four or five hours. Then you could simply walk by where they had been sitting and get sick. So we're trying to kind of limit the amount of potentially, you know, virus-laden air that's floating around in the library. We go around and spray surfaces and that kind of thing as well. The. I put this in my board report though, the, the study did come out to say that. That COVID disappears from common library materials within 72 hours or less, so. So that's good, so we only need to quarantine our materials for three days now, really, it's almost four by the time we check them in. And. And that also kind of, I think it tells us how long something is probably also on a table or on a keyboard or mouse. So we are trying to be very clean. But it does seem that. That airborne is more the issue than touching something and then getting it, so. So that's how things are going in here, it's not been too bad, knock on wood so far.
Point of order, do you need a motion to form your? Committee?
I'd be happy to have one, I think I, I have the authority as president.
Okay. That, that's fine. Just, just inquiring.
No, I'm sure. Let me just ask a question, Diana, how, how we're operating in comparison to other libraries in the area? How, how different or consistent are we from other public libraries?
I think we're pretty similar, actually. I got the idea to station someone at the door from Sally Logan Library. I, I have, in our. List serve, it seems that. All of the libraries close to us that have, that have answered, you know, questions about stuff like this are saying that they're being very strict about mask use and they are enforcing it. There was only one library up in the metro east that said. They don't think it's their business to do that. I do think it's our business to protect our staff and the public. So I think we're, we're pretty similar in that, I'm seeing in terms of time limits and I've heard some libraries impose. 15 minute limits, appointment only, 30 minute limits, so I think we're probably being fairly generous with the two hours. Most things that you would need to do in here, you can do in two hours, we have, we've not limited. Our computer use, it's still 90 minutes, some libraries have limited their computer use to an hour to 30 minutes. So I think we've been pretty generous. But not really straying super far from what other libraries are, are doing in the area. From what I can tell.
Any other questions?
How do you keep track of somebody's time in the building?
Well, right now, since we're, we're stopping them at the door, we write down their name and we write down the time they came in. And then we mark it when they leave. Sometimes it's hard to mark when they leave because you could have a turnover in staff, so you don't necessarily recognize the person who's walking out the door. If the person doesn't stop, but. What we can do is kind of look at that list and see, you know, who's on it and. And has been sitting there apparently in here for more than two hours and then walk around and see who's in there and see if you can pair up the person with the list. And so it really hasn't been too bad, we haven't, we've only had a couple of people who are. Regulars who like to be in here all day, who's had to be, you know, told that it was, that their two hours were up. And after really the first time or two of being told that, they've become less argumentative about it, so.
But you said you were going to stop having that person at the door.
Yeah, so then we'll have to figure it out, I think that. Like I've said to my staff, we pretty much know who bends our rules. So I think we can kind of. As, as we are walking around and cleaning every couple of hours, we can kind of notice who's in here, kind of make a note of it and. And then, you know, make a note to ourselves and communicate with one another like, you know. How long do you think this person has been, has been here and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk around again in a couple of hours and look and see if they're still here and if they are, then I'll know, you know. So we kind of mark twice as we see it. So I, I think that's probably what we'll end up doing, but I'm going to consult with the staff and see if they feel like, like we still need to continue to have somebody at the door. And I think they feel that that's, that that's worth what it does in terms of cutting into their work time. See how they feel about it, but we've been just doing a lot of getting up and walking around and seeing what's going on, you know, tell people to pull the mask up over your nose, spray down keyboards and that kind of thing too, so.
I don't think there are any committee reports, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? How do you think the report with paper and behavior?
Nothing to address yet.
There's no other business, the meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right, everybody be safe.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.